We have a contract result tonight on the 15 KVA circuit breaker and the telescoping lot lower.
The circuit breakers, the bid results on those have been forwarded, all the bids, paperwork has been forwarded to Kurt Wilson, our electrical engineer. He's going to be reviewing those during the course of the week. And I've taken the liberty of adding that to our special meeting of September 9th. That we had scheduled for the bid opening for the pay, for the curbing and sidewalk from Maple Street. So I've added the award for those circuit breakers for that day. Mr. Wilson seems to think that he'll have that prepared and reviewed in his recommendation for that time. So if that's satisfactory, we'll, we'll hold that for four o'clock for the special meeting on the 9th of September. The telescopic loader, we received three bids. Dragoons Farm Equipment, their bid with, without a trade-in was eighty-nine thousand and with the trade-in fifty-five six. They had no deviations on their bid. Anderson Equipment, their bid without a trade-in was sixty thousand one twenty-nine and with the trade-in was forty-nine one twenty-nine. They did have deviations. Drew Brothers, their bid item without a trade-in was fifty-nine thousand and with the trade-in was fifty-one thousand. They also had deviations. And I've spoke with Mr. Bernard from Public Works. I've spoken with Mr. Pelkey from Public Works. I've spoke with Mr. Reed from Sewage. And based on the deviations from both Anderson and Drew Brothers, they are recommending to me that we go with Dragoons, even though it's the higher bidder, they have no deviations and they feel that that loader, which is Gale, is overall going to be best for the village. And I believe, I've checked with Mr. Letourneau and we have funded, we have enough money budgeted in our current budget to pay for this at fifty-five six. So that is the recommendation that I have.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Dragoons Farm Equipment.
Second. Motion made and seconded any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay. Command and the public at this time. No one wish to address the board at this time? You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the regular, of the previous meeting of August 18th. You all have copies. Is there any addition or deletions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Got it.
Second.
Motion by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. You all have copies of the bills, Arsen.
There are no additions or deletions.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills, okay?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckrow, pay the bills. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question for Arsen. Arsen, the third, the last page, Luck Brothers Landmark and Luck Brothers. Did you and John Carr have a chance at all to meet?
Well, we have not.
Not yet?
No.
I know you were out, you were on vacation last week, but...
And he didn't come in the week before, so...
Okay.
I thought he was going to be here tonight, but I guess I'll have to call him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
No discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have a letter that was dated August 26th that was addressed to dear village board members. My truck was hit by a village employee who was operating village equipment. Due to gear of my truck, I am not fixing it at this time. I would appreciate a check for the damage of five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents as per the estimate. If you insist on having my truck fixed at this time, there will be an added charge to you for renting a vehicle while mine is being repaired. Sincerely, Clarence Ashlynn.
Let me get the details on that.
One of the employees down in Public Works Electric Department was putting away a piece of equipment at the end of the day and he, I don't know, something happened with the equipment, had a piece of equipment, he hit the side or back end of Clarence's truck and an estimate was provided for that amount of money. And instead of us paying the repair shop to do it, he's asking that the check be paid directly to him because he doesn't, at this time, he doesn't, because of the year, he doesn't want to fix it at this time. So he's asking for the money to be paid directly to him as opposed to paying it to a repair. And if we don't do that, he's asking for, he will be asking us to pay for rental vehicle while his is being fixed if we insist on having it fixed. That's what he's saying.
You give a motion for it?
No, I don't believe there was one.
We made a motion a while ago and then we have an accident. We need to report it.
This was found out a week after the fact. We weren't, the fellow that hit him wasn't aware that he was supposed to notify us. He's relatively new employee and no one from down at Public Works notified us that this had happened. And I believe Mr. Pelkey was on vacation that week. In fact, I know he was on vacation that week. So we're going to pay the, basically, you're going to be paying the five hundred and fifty-seven forty-seven to repair the vehicle. It did happen. There was a, the employee did, the employee that did hit the, Mr. Ashlynn's truck did provide a written, a short paragraph stating what had happened and he apologized. He didn't realize that he had to report it, nor did anyone down there inform him that he should report it.
Didn't we change our policy not a few months ago when we just had an accident? Every accident in the village, didn't we say we need a official report?
You might have, Mr. Jefferson, but I wasn't here when you did it, so I can't recall it without going back in a minute.
I know I'm not making that up, I mean, just...
I think we did, but I think as Phil said, this person is relatively new to the village and...
Probably wasn't even aware of it.
Right.
What year is this truck?
I'm not sure of that, without looking up the, eighteen ninety.
Ninety?
Ninety.
Fourteen years old. You saw the damage and everything, right? They explained it?
Yes.
The same day, did they explain it?
No, it was a week after. I was on vacation.
Oh, that's right.
And, I mean, they should have brought it to the building the day it happened.
Well, hopefully this will serve as a good reminder, though.
Well...
For that, right?
You have to pay it tonight?
It's got to be paid. Whether it be paid tonight or next week or six weeks from now.
Well, he's not going to fix that. I know two more weeks wouldn't make that much of a difference.
Why don't you want to pay it tonight? You want to look at it?
No, I'd like to have Bob Craig or somebody look at it. You know, just so that, I mean, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but it's just, you know, I mean, let's make rules, let's, let's follow them. You know, whatever you want to do.
Well, it's whatever the board wants to do.
We are going to have to pay for it.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's no use turning it to the insurance, Bob.
Well, that one will help.
Well, I don't care, whatever you want to do, Bob.
Somebody has to make a motion here.
I'll make the motion that we give Mr. Ashlynn what he's asking for and pay us per the estimate.
Second?
Yes.
Motion made by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Huckrow. Is there any other discussion?
Are deductible, Phil, on that policy, is how much?
I think it's thousands, at least a thousand.
Any other discussion? There being any discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Bit of a stain from voting.
And aye, vote aye. Motion carried.
And our next correspondence was a letter that I received from Jackie Kelleher, who's our labor attorney. Dear Mr. Bahno, I'm happy to report that CSC has consented to our request to designate Carol Handel as a confidential employee pursuant to the Taylor Law. I understand this is, their consent to designate the position she holds is confidential as well, which would be senior clerk and deputy clerk for the village. I am imposing pre-information letters dated August 14th, one from administrative law Judge Quinn summarizing his understanding of this issue and one from CSC consenting to the designation. So Carol Handel is now considered a confidential employee for the village in her positions. Next letter we have is a letter from Larry Abear. It was attention Mayor George Rivers and village board members. Throughout the years, so many times, we depend on the fire, police, rescue squad, highway and electric departments to pull together in times of need for the community. It's during these times when there are so many special people in these departments that give their all, but because of the nature of the business, go unnoticed but have, went that extra mile beyond what they had to because they care about the people they are serving like they are their own family. These communities are very close knit. We rail down toward the people that make the difference. During the last unexpected torrential rainfall that the village of Rouse Point experienced on ten August oh-three, I was one of the residents that needed the services of the fire departments in the area without the help. My basement would have been totally flooded and the electrical panel box would have been underwater in a very short time, which I am sure would have caused other problems. I am very thankful for their help during this time of need. The Shady and Rouse's Point Fire Departments were both at my house at different, at a different time on that evening. They did a great job. To show my appreciation, I would like to perform a free concert for the village residents and residents of the local surrounding communities to include Shady, Moores and Champlain. My performance will last approximately two hours. I am requesting your approval to perform at the Peggy Huckrow gazebo on Sunday afternoon, the seventh of September, from two to four P.M. Thank you in advance for taking the time to review my request. I look forward to hearing from you. Signed, Larry Lee Abear.
I'd like to make a motion to allow him to perform that concert.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckrow. Is there any discussion?
It's a great idea.
Time to be in all discussion. All those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The next letter was a letter from Mr. Rossi Jackson, who's dated the twentieth of August two thousand and three. Dear board members, I would like to make you aware of my concerns regarding the severe drainage problem on my street. In the spring of two thousand, I purchased and moved into a home that had never flooded. There was a sump pump to handle spring thaws and the occasional heavy downpour. My basement flooded in April two thousand and one, again in June two thousand and two and again in August two thousand and three. Each time a fire department has been needed to set up sandbags and do massive pump outs. Each time I have been told that the village has done some ditch digging and it will never happen again. My neighbor, Mr. Booton, has also flooded on all these occasions. He tells me that the two thousand and one episode is the first time he ever had such a problem. He also tells me that he never needed so much as a sump pump before the village built the sewer plant. Every year, something more is done to alter the landscape to the west of my home. No one seems to consider the repercussions to the neighboring homes. The grade of the land from the ditch to the west of my house is downhill in my direction. Porter Brothers does a pretty good job blocking that ditch yearly as well. When there's a rapid thaw or heavy downpour, the water has nowhere to go. A drainage ditch on Barnes and Lily Streets would go a long way towards solving the problem. The small graded drain on the corner is nearly useless, that is, as it is so easily overwhelmed. I do realize the rainfall of August tenth was an unusual event. However, it did and does happen. Had we had an appropriate drainage system, we would never have had a problem of that proportion. The LeFay Home looked as if it were sitting in the center of a small lake. Please make this problem a priority for my street and others that share this problem. Signed, Rossi Jackson. And they live at eight Barnes Street here in the village.
Okay, we fix it. Taking a look at that, Brian? Any large or something?
We're going to look at the size of the state drain that's down on Lake Street and we're going to see if we can put a drain down through on Barn Street. Because the land is so flat, it just, the water has no place to go.
Right.
So if we have to, we might have to contour the edge of the road a little bit so the water will flow and we could probably put catch basins in.
That topsoil that Berle Brothers pushed up over there, does that affect that?
Nelson's been in here probably three, four times to redo the ditch and it seems to be filled in. We need to probably go with a different route and look...
Yeah.
Because they can own the land. I mean, I don't think, you know...
And I understand that, private land.
Yeah, really.
Doug, could we have any recourse on private land?
Well, if you evaluate it and you see that your only choice to alleviate a problem for the public is to use private land, then you try to work with the person to get an easement. And if you really feel that it's needed and the person fights you, then you do an eminent domain. But if it looks like you want to push that water northwest, you know, towards the tracks, you know, back into that drainage system...
There was a heavy ditch on that side.
It just, and it hasn't been cleaned out in decades.
Baited it from the D H or the C M side there.
Saw cattails and filled in. If that thing were dredged or something...
If that was cleaned out and the water would bait the drain that way, it would relieve a lot of that problem?
We might never have this problem again, Chuck.
Let's hope we don't.
Three times it's been flooded. So land is just so flat through there. I mean, all the roads, all the back of our new building and us, you know, we're putting tarmac in. It seems like everything is just so flat, the water has no place to go. Butt down Barn.
And I, I had a long conversation with Harvey about two weeks ago and he said it's not just the kind of rain that we had.
Well, they get in the spring too.
Yeah, he's spiting that it's really becoming quite a problem. And then I spoke with Nelson about what he had done and...
We do have ditches halfway up that go to the north and it just, it's not enough. The land is just so flat from halfway up the sewer plant road, there's a ditch that goes across that heads north. And that land is so flat from that ditch headed towards Ross's house and toward Barn Street, it's just, and Shazy Hardware, they pump all their water out on the Barn Street from their yard.
How about the ditch on the other side of Shazy Hardware?
Very shallow. It's only about a foot and a half, two foot deep.
That's a state ditch, isn't it?
It's tied into the state.
It's tied into the state, but it's not...
So since it's been there so long, they would lay some claim to that, you know?
Ooh.
State, if we altered it.
I realize that, but let's get the state out.
Yeah.
It's just, the line that goes across from Shazy Hardware empties out right here in this little ditch.
Yeah.
And it's only, not even knee deep.
Not very deep.
It's not very deep, so if you try to, you know, put a drainage tile across Shazy Hardware to Barn Street, you wouldn't, it would freeze.
No, 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 but I'm talking about that. Let's, if this is a state-run ditch right here, right out here, let's ask the state to take a look at that and maybe they can clean that up.
Yeah, I think the one over here is...
It's not easy, this, this one here goes into the state, maybe this is two or three or four years ago. Okay. It goes under eleven, correct? Another variable might be, the plan always was that we would use the existing sewer outfall that goes along through here. We would turn that into a storm sewer after we have the new outfall in.
Hold your breath. You got the outfall.
Yeah, I know. Someday we'll have that outfall in and then that could open up an opportunity to give you some catch basins and whatnot, tie into this pipe and send that water out.
But if you want, we can look, tomorrow, I can send Nelson down and we can look at the size of the state pipe that's on Lake Street right here and see if there's something that we can at least divert the water away from Ross and Harvey's house.
I looked at that down there, Brian, and there's two, two catch basins, I might say. One on each side of the Baker property. Take a look at that. Two big catch bases, are they running into one? I think you need to take a look there.
No. It should be...
I think they're both running into the same, going down that ditch.
Yeah, it's the ditch that goes behind...
Now, mine, your place, down through. I think both those catch bases are running into that.
We'll have to look at that and...
In that case, there just isn't enough there anyway.
No. Well, let's budget for maybe some...
Well, I think maybe there's, there's a lot of state involvement here. Maybe we should get the state engineers up here and take a look at this again. Because I talked to...
Tim Barret?
No, the guy in Champlain that's, the former...
Gary...
Whatever his name is. The day, a couple of days afterwards, when they were working in front of, of Broad Street. I can't think of the name, I haven't seen your moment. Anyway...
George Golds.
Oh, yeah, Georgie Golds. They, uh... Told me they cleaned that out about two or three years ago and I think it's been longer than that. That ditch down there.
Oh, down here?
Yeah.
It's been longer than that. I noticed the state was back there today because I seen a state truck. He was inspecting that ditch.
Wow.
So maybe it's the time to, when they do the reconstruction on, on the main street here next year, maybe it's time to maybe ask them to put a larger culvert down to the lake.
Good point.
Because they do have a right of way all the way through, down to the lake.
Yeah, I know that.
And then we could always tap into it. But I'd just like to do something to get at least Ross and Harvey a little satisfaction and, you know, maybe we can put something in that would at least alleviate their problem for now.
Are you sure?
We can, we'll, we'll take a look at that tomorrow.
So I'll send them a letter saying that we'll be looking into the problem and attempting to address it. The next correspondence we had was from Clinton County Department Personnel, was dated August 25th, it was addressed to dear Mayor Rivers. I have scheduled, scheduled a public hearing in the Clinton County Legislative Chambers on the second floor of the Clinton County Government Center, 137 Market Street, Plattsburgh, on Friday, October 10th at nine A.M. for the purpose of reviewing proposed modifications to the appendices of civil service rules for Clinton County and proposed modifications to the text of the rules. Copies of all proposed changes will be available for review at the Clinton County Department of Personnel during normal business hours beginning September the first. Your participation in the public hearing process is welcome. Sincerely, Alan Gibson, Personnel Director.
You want to attend that, Phil?
I would like to attend that if I may. I'd like to go down and have a time to review and the changes...
Why don't we ask them, see if they can't get a copy of that?
It's quite extensive. I mean, we could ask, but I, I think they're, it's fairly involved, so I can certainly check with them, but I would like to review and then, you know, attend the hearing.
Yeah, at least, at least have a chance to see what's there. I don't think we need a motion for that. It's a workday.
And that's all I have, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Phil. Reporter, Mayor and trustees, first thing on the agenda tonight is the I E P meeting in Syracuse until September 17th. This is our, where we, our Energy Conservation Fund and I would like to attend, along with anybody else that would like to go. It's one overnight. Go down that day, come back the next.
I can't go, but I'd like to make a motion to allow Mayor Rivers to go to the conference in Syracuse.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. I have one other thing that I just hammered in here. Brian, the old sewer machine, is that surplus now? The old sewer cleaning beginning. And I would like to declare that machine surplus and advertise it for sale. And we'd like to try to put it on the computer somehow, eBay or whatever, to see what we can get for it. I don't, I don't know that procedure, but...
What's it worth?
I have no idea.
We did, we just recently received our new sewer machine. It was budget, last year's budget. Yeah, it was, it was supposed to be ordered last year and we just received it. So it's, that's why we're, we're surplusing the old one, if we can get something for it.
There is some requests out there, there's a request that I believe from Lieutenant Morris might be interested in. And if we want to be to sell it correctly to Lieutenant Morris, we don't really need to want a bid if none of the US Cali wants it.
Do you want to check the pen first?
Yeah, I can check a jack, I want to. They're looking forward to cleaning out culverts and stuff like that. It goes as is. And that's all I have. Who's doing trustee Bernard tonight? Okay. Just a reminder, everybody, the special meeting, September 9th, four P.M. As to award the sidewalk bid from Maple Street and award the contract for the fifteen KVA circuit breakers. And I have a request from the secretary to the judge for travel to a advanced court clerk class in Saratoga Springs. And all the paperwork has been filed and all in order and I need a motion.
Make a motion that we sent Tony to these meetings.
Second.
A motion made by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Huckrow. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, trustee Huckrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is request an executive session to discuss Civic Center Personnel.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call, vote, trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
Water tank updates, Doug, and also any progress on the new system.
All right, on the water projects, got some news to report. Landmarks, subcontractor Arrow Painting, I was here for the last couple of weeks painting the interior of the tank. They were released last week and right now the tank is locked. Landmark is expected to be back tomorrow and their piping crew is coming in to finish the internal piping. Also, there is some external piping, underground piping, that's part of their contract and they are going to subcontract that to Luck Brothers, which I think is a good move. Let's see, right now, this week, the twelve inch main coming from the new water tank is being installed on Academy Street Extension and on Academy Street and being tied into the, the old tank. And it is likely that next week, or perhaps even later this week, we are going to start to cause disruption at the village offices in anticipation of doing the boring. We may have approval to do the boring next week underneath Lake Street, where I use exactly the former place. And patching of asphalt on Liberty and Clinton Streets is supposed to start later this week or early next week. And we had a contract signing last week for contracts three and four, the mechanical and the electrical, and some of you were there. I was, combined with a meeting with Landmark because coordination between all these contracts is very important. And lastly, John Carr has asked me to ask you if he could have your authorization to go to the Health Department this Friday to talk with John Canosa about the serpentine piping, whether that could just be on paper instead of having to be installed or if it's absolutely needed, so he...
I've got a question on that.
Yes.
We were told that we should have three thousand, thirty-two hundred feet of drainage break in there.
That's correct. And then that changed.
I heard today that would change to six hundred feet.
That is correct.
Well...
Well, I think it's going to be more than six hundred, okay? But what happened is the thirty-two hundred was a quick and dirty number based on available pH information and water temperatures and chlorine information. And so what happened is thirty-two hundred was kind of like a first pass to get the ball out there, to show you this is the potential cost, this is the potential impact. So John went back and looked at more data. He got some updated pH information. That was a biggie because we had a pH meter at the water plant that was reading one point higher, if you recall, and so he was using some dated information. So when he saw that the pH is closer to seven, being slightly acidic rather than eight, that makes a difference and you're killed, okay? The more acidic it is, the less chlorine you need to do the job with the bacteria. So that was one thing that helped reduce that initial estimate of thirty-two hundred. The other thing is...
But how, how, so what, you know, Doctor, what's the twenty percent of?
Well, no, first of all, I don't think the six hundred is correct, John, okay? The six hundred was, was, he went thirty-two hundred, then he went to six hundred, and I think it's actually probably like twelve hundred is what it's going to be, okay? Because what happens is when you're doing this calcu- Because what happens is, when you're doing this calculation as to what effect the chlorine is having on the bacteria to kill it, there's, it's a chemistry problem, all right? So the pH is very important. The other thing is the water temperature, okay? So if we play with the water temperature, then we may be able to get by with less pipe. If we go in there and do the calculation with 76 degrees, which is what the lake peaked at this year, we won't need hardly any pipe at all. Because the warmer the water it is, the water is the better kill you get. But in the winter, when the water's down to 32, 33 degrees, you need a lot of chlorine or a lot of chlorine contact time in order to get a kill. So what John did in that initial estimate was he was using cold water, and he was using the higher pH numbers, and so that resulted in 3,200 feet. So now what he's doing is, after, it was prompted by Gary Malinsky, who nudged me and said, hey, that sounded like a lot of pipe, and so then I went and talked to John, and I said, what's the deal here? And he said, well, we can look at that again. And he looked at it and started working with it, and he says, well, I could probably do this, I could probably do that. He goes, if the Health Department will accept it. Because the Health Department's going to review it. And so if they look and they say, oh geez, you used 50 degrees or you used 60 degrees, then what happens, they'll say, what happens when it's 32 degrees? You know, what if you have this problem with your tank and you have to use the serpentine piping or rely on it in the middle of winter? You know, then your kill is only this. Those are the kind of questions that they can ask. So he's working on it from that angle.
Okay, what's the other part of this? You said he's going to talk with...
He wants to talk to the local Health Department to see if, what he's hoping is that the serpentine piping may be able to be just a paper thing, that we can have it on the shelf but not have to build it. And he said likely what will happen is that Steve Marshall, well, that John Canosa may defer, no, excuse me, Steve Marshall is the Health Department G.I. in Albany, who has to approve this for the SRF. And so what will happen is, if we can get Canosa to agree that let's, let's just do it without the piping or whatever, then what will happen is, we're ready to go to the SRF to get our money, okay? If, if Canosa says, well, I think you got to put the serpentine piping in there, and Steve Marshall says, I want to see it, I want to look at your calculations and everything, then we're looking at maybe a little more time, recycle a delay to get our SRF funding. And so that's one of the motivations, is to see if we can simplify the process rather than have this new element that Steve Marshall doesn't know anything about, serpentine piping.
What would be the point in doing it just on paper? If we know we're going to have to do it someday anyway?
Then the Health, you might buy some comfort from the Health Department that you've got it engineered, it's there, and it's something maybe you can do with your own village forces if you had to. It's, I've seen it done before, where if it's on the shelf, you kind of get some points scored, you know? And the biggie is, if we can get that agreement locally, and we don't have to work with Albany and go through the whole review process and buy two or four, six more weeks before we can get our SRF approved.
Brian, is that, is this, this is a job that you guys could do?
Yes.
Yeah, assuming that you're not rebuilding down the street or doing...
Well, tell us something that we could wait on until we are financially a little bit better set.
If you can, if we can, yeah.
So I guess in summary, there's, there's a couple things here. One is the question 3,200 versus 600. I'd like to make it clear that that was, that was the difference between a preliminary number and a more detailed number. The 600 isn't the final number either, okay? I think it was probably like 1,200. And it's complicated and has that much variation because of the accuracy of the original calculations and the fact that we have better pH information, and we started working with the temperature range a little. You know, it's fine tuning, okay?
I've got another question.
Yes.
At the last meeting, I brought up the issue of the 16-inch pipe as it crosses Maple Street to water Clinton. And John indicated at that time that he could put more insulation out, but no matter what, we're going to have a dip in the new road in the winter time because of frost movement and so on and so forth.
Okay.
There would be a, you know, why can't we move, why can't we put that pipe down lower? And I understand that we could use a sleeve, I'll call it for lack of any other word, to bring it closer down to the other pipes that are in the ground there, and that would give it an added protection.
I don't believe so. And this question could be best answered with visual aids, which I don't have, but I will do my best to try and describe to you why that pipe is where it is. And in fact, John Carr is preparing a full, detailed document on that very issue, okay? So this will be kind of a precursor to it, and I may not be 100% accurate, but I'm going to be pretty darn close. The reason that pipe is where it is is because it was not feasible to go underneath everything. It's not feasible to go through everything, because there was so much piping, we could show it in cross-section, in a diagram, sanitary, sewer, water, et cetera, on the west side of Maple Street, that we weren't going to be able to snake it through, the 16-inch because it's so large. And so a thought is, let's go down below, let's go underneath, okay? But in looking at the geometry that would be required to put that pipe down underneath, it would have been something like 12, 13, 15, it would have been a, and John has this information, a tremendously deep hole that we would not have been able to use a trenchbox for. It would have been hand dug, you wouldn't be able to use a machine because most of it had to be hand digging, you're adding these pipes. It would have been, I mean, just a disaster. Now, so what we did is we went over the pipe, and then what we did is we boxed it in with insulation. And we've got calculations to show the difference between foam insulation and dirt for its R-value is great, okay? You get more R-value out of foam insulation than you do out of dirt. And so that pipe is well insulated, okay? I can't address this hump thing, I wasn't privy to that, okay? But, so that pipe is protected, and this will be presented to you in detail. Now, when we had the break there, and I was exposed in the newspaper article and everything, you see the picture, all right? You've got, we've got measurements that will be in this report that show there's, when that road is done, there's going to be like three foot 10 maybe, or something like that cover over the top of the pipe, three foot six, somewhere in that vicinity, three foot plus, okay?
That's, that's assuming that we are still going to drop down that road to some degree?
I have to verify that, John. I can't. I believe it is, but that'll be included in the detailed report. And so that pipe, now, if we wanted a Monday morning quarterback and go and say, let's do a boring, you know, a directional bore, we could do that, okay? But that would be an extra, and it would be very costly, as you know, we've done a few of those, the bore.
How much distance is there between the 16-inch pipe and the pipe immediately below it?
I don't know, not a lot. It might be kissing, and then be like right there or something. It's really...
Right there. Right there.
So we went as low as we could. And I will say that we do have documentation also, that there are, is at least one other line in the village, a 10-inch line on South Maples, the southern end of Maple Street, that had a similar lack of cover, and that, to the best of our knowledge, that has not been a problem, either freezing, hump, or otherwise. And so there is documentation to show that, hey, I wouldn't want to put every pipe that shallow, you know?
If we have to leave it at that particular depth, is there anything that can be done to the road bed at that spot so that we're not going to experience that variation in winter and summer?
I would think there should be, some kind of geotextile or some type of reinforcement that we could put in there to try to bridge it.
I really don't like the idea of putting a 16-inch, of having a...
That was the first, I've heard this description of the winter hump.
But John will be having a detailed thing on this, certainly by the next meeting?
Yeah, he's got, let's see, I think it might be...
Can we afford to wait until the next meeting, Brian, on that? You're working, the point we want is to get this on Maple Street.
Yeah, well, that's going to affect the reconstruction of Maple Street.
Yep.
The longer you wait...
I know that you probably don't have all the answers, so I don't think that... And I'm sorry, I wasn't here last Wednesday, but... Okay, sir, thank you.
Can I add something and ask you a question, so I'm understanding what's happening too? I contacted Mr. Canosa last week, and I asked him, because I, and I wasn't going to bring this up because I had heard when Mr. Carr mentioned possibly going from 3,200 to 600 feet, what I had asked Mr. Canosa and what I had found out, or what he had told me over the phone, and he just followed, I asked him to follow this up in writing, and I got it this afternoon, and at 3:47 he faxed it to me. What I had asked him last week, because of the concerns of some of you folks as to the cost of going into another tank or into this piping system, which Mr. Carr had said could run ballpark figures, 250-plus thousand dollars, I wanted to know if the existing, or new tank, I should say, the new tank that's going to be going online would suffice for the purposes of the Health Department, including chlorine contact time. And based on what Doug has said in this letter that I received from Mr. Canosa today, I don't know if I'm more confused or not, and maybe Doug can help me to figure it out, but I'll give him a copy of it.
Okay, your question, Phil, you said, will the 1.5 million gallon tank provide enough chlorine contact time?
Right.
The answer to that question is yes.
Okay, because what he said, and he said, Dear Mr. Bahrner, consistent with your request, I am providing this letter to you to reiterate that it is our understanding that the Village of Brousas Point Water System, including your new water storage tower, will be capable of providing adequate chlorine contact time. Now, I guess this is where I'm going to miss it down the road. It is our understanding that the Village plans to remove the existing water storage tank from use after the new water storage tank is placed into operation. As detailed in a June 16, 2000 letter to Mayor Rivers, which we have, in the past, you have previously operated beneath standard practices with the existing, or parentheses, smaller tank only, without experiencing adverse water quality impacts. Then he goes on, and he cites similar to what he did in the, his June 16 letter that he wrote. An additional tank or subsurface large diameter storage piping, parentheses, water storage unit, would allow you to service the water storage units appropriately and ultimately at less cost. Furthermore, by having two separate storage units or tanks, you'll avoid having a boiled water order while the storage tanks are being serviced. So what is he saying, Doug, in this thing? Is he saying, I'm getting confused?
Yeah, it sounds...
Is he saying, I mean, if we have this pipeline or another storage tank, either or, if our new tank were to have to go down, we would have adequate chlorine contact time? But without it, we wouldn't? Yet again, in the first sentence...
No, 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 we've got enough chlorine contact time with the 1.5 gallon tank, okay?
Without going to any kind of another storage system, be it piping or either tank?
Right, the whole purpose behind considering having a two-tank system or having this serpentine piping is so when that new tank is taken out of service every five to 10 years for inspection, every 20 years for a touch-up paint job, that we won't get stuck with a boiled water order. But as we just showed two weeks ago, to my surprise, we were able to go and take that tank off, get the Health Department to cooperate with us, and have the tank inspected without a boiled water order. So what the second tank would do was, it would make sure that you're really in good shape.
And you wouldn't have to worry about it.
Yeah, I mean, you can never say never because, you know, now it's hold that right. And then, and then with the serpentine piping, the reason for that is that that's, takes more time, so that... So it's not a storage tank, but it's kind of a snake-like trail.
Which, which will give it the half-hour chlorine contact time or whatever it takes.
Yeah, give it the extra 15 minutes we need.
But it wouldn't be a, would it, in other words, if that main tank were to go down, say, for 30 days for repairs or something?
Right.
That, whether it's 600, 1200, or 3,200 feet, whatever ultimately is approved to design, would be the appropriate chlorine contact time?
That's the idea, yes, yes.
Okay. But the way I posed the question to Mr. Canosa is the tank that we have now, because, you know, and it's cited in here, and he's kind of copying or reiterating, I said, and he goes on to say, for these reasons, the Clinton County Health Department recommends that the Village of Brousas Point consider in the near future as economics and potential funding oils, and those are two concerns.
Sure.
And we have a large employer in the village who's, you know, going through some layoffs, and also our financial situation, you know, we don't want to get in more debt if we can help it. The designing and construction of a second backup storage, water storage unit or tank is recommended, okay? But he told me, he said that we would not have approved this new tank if it wouldn't have been approved.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
So do, I'm trying to understand then why John has to go to them to get their approval in order to get the funding? I guess that's where I'm...
Oh, no, 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 no. The part that John is going about is the serpentine piping.
Right.
That's new. That's a new element, okay? That entered...
But why would that, would that, because you said it would hold, it could hold up or it could, it could slow down our stabilizing...
Yes, yes, because what happened is, the Health Department, Albany, with a little help from Clinton County, reviewed the designs.
Okay.
All right, all this stuff, all the things that we've gone out to bid for, they reviewed and approved, okay? And so as part of that, they wouldn't have proved it if it didn't have the proper chlorine contact time in that million and a half gallon tank. The original plan was to have two tanks.
Yes.
That's the way it was presented.
Right.
So what happened is, when we got to this point where we were going to let the old tank go, John was saying, well, you know, Albany's going to have a fit, because all of a sudden, we're naked, we got one tank again, you know, and if that tank goes down or if we service it regularly like we should, then every five, 10, 20, 15 years, we're going to have this boiled water issue. So then John said we might be able to do this serpentine piping. He threw that up that night on June 23rd. That was the first time that serpentine piping came up.
Yeah, right, exactly.
All right? And so Albany knows nothing about serpentine piping at this point.
But Albany is still, according to Mr. Canosa, has still approved our 1.5 million tank as being acceptable for our purposes.
Yes.
Am I all right on that part?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. So what is it he needs approval for then?
Serpentine piping, if we choose to do that.
As opposed to what?
Just not, I mean, well, we're going to say, look, we're taking the old tank down.
Right, and they know we're doing that. I talked to him, he realized.
Well, Albany doesn't know that. So, no, Albany doesn't know that. So what we're going to do is tell Albany, look, remember that plan you approved? Well, here's the plan asterisk, okay? The plan asterisk is, we, we have just one tank, we're taking the old one down, and we're going to put the serpentine piping in for our five, 10, 15-year periodic inspections. Now, what John is proposing is that if he goes in and meets Canosa, he's never met the guy, then he can talk with them about the pH, about the water and this and that, and then say, look, do we really have to build this serpentine piping? You know, we just went through a situation where he took the tank out of service, we didn't have to get a boiled water order, so why don't we just do it like this? And if John Canosa, if we get his support, if he says, okay, when John Carr sends this package down to the SRF, to Steve Marshall in Albany, Steve Marshall's going to call up Canosa and say, hey, they're taking that tank down, you know, how do you feel about that? And if Canosa's on the same page as us, then it's like, bang, don't worry about it.
Because he did say to me, and I asked him, I said, do we have to have a second storage component, be it a tank or this piping, in order to be legal or okay with Health Department? He said, no, you don't. So, you know, that's why, I guess I was getting confused.
All right, well, I mean...
Maybe I, you know, maybe we're not, you know, on the exact page, but I'm trying to understand.
Well, he's not Steve Marshall, and, you know, he, he didn't know about the serpentine piping probably until you brought it up to him.
Oh, he knew about it.
Oh, he did?
Oh, he knew about it.
Okay, then...
I don't know how he knew about it, but he knew about it.
Then, I mean, we're, we're looking at Albany, is ultimately what we're looking at.
Right, because I told him, I said, I'm not saying we're not going to do the piping, I'm just, I just wanted to know where we stand, so if, you know, because we are concerned with finances, we are concerned with the industry in the village, and if we don't have to do it now, and I've never been against a quote, two-tank system, it's just that tank I've been against or not recommending, I guess is the word I want to use. I certainly can understand it, but we were just looking, and I know some of the board people had talked to me, about if we didn't have to do it now, if we could save 250, 300 thousand dollars and still be on solid grounds with everybody and their brother and not hold up our funding, you know, coming back for this project, it may be something they want to consider.
Sure.
That was the only reason, you know, I called and talked to him.
And, and the final save is going to be Steve Marshall, but, in Albany, but John Carr's strategy is, he thinks if Canosa is on board with us, then...
Right, he would support it.
Yes.
Okay.
Then Marshall would call him up and bang, and then, but if Marshall wants to sink his teeth in and say, "You've got to have it," then what can happen is he'll do his review and he'll send a review letter back in thirty days and he'll say, "Change his elbow, change that flange, that kind of junk," and then this is where the cancel delays could come through. So that's why I, I'd like...
Preemptive.
I'd like, well, yeah, I'd like the board's acknowledgement or approval. Would you like John Carr to meet John Canosa to try to work this strategy as discussed here?
The strategy you're talking about is should, when, when, not should, when we have to shut the tank down for payment purposes, that we will not have to have boiled water ordered?
No, the strategy is that we won't have to do the serpentine piping right now.
I understand that, but if, but the time is going to come when we are going to have to do something.
Well, what we'll do, you mean, like a...
In five years, we're going to have to shut the tank down for inspection.
Yes, and I would propose we do the same thing we did two or three weeks ago, or a month ago.
You proposed that, but if they...
Right, if they balk at it and they could say, "You know that thing you got on the shelf, serpentine piping, get Brian Falcone and his guys out there to build it." That's what they could do.
Or they can tell you to have a boiled order.
Or boil water.
Water order.
Yeah, they could say that.
You feel as though if we just hold on this in writing, you guys are going to...
Definitely would.
It sounds like...
It's going to save us a lot of bucks, you know?
Yeah.
It sounds, though, like we're, we're in decent shape according to the last paragraph that Phil just read. I mean, he's saying economics and funding allows.
That's, yeah.
He recognizes the fact, but, but you did say before that he's really...
He does have input, yeah, I think, I think that, I think he's on our team, I do.
I hope he is.
But he's got a, but Marshall is the wild card and, and John Carr hasn't met John Canosa yet, and it's all good for those two in basic place.
Bottom line is, no matter what we do, bottom line is, no matter what we do, county health department can put a boil water on to us anytime.
That is correct.
They obviously can.
They, they, they hold the trigger.
They hold...
What happens with why if you tell them you've got to boil the water?
I mean, look, it's, hey, it's out of your hands. It's just like that, the last deal that we went through.
Nothing that happens every day.
No, no.
But I, the only thing I'm worried about, are we going to shut production down, Eric's because, or Wyatt, because we've got to boil water? I mean, I don't know, is that...
I mean, we could lose a transformer in our substation to shut down production. I mean, that's just one of the things that will happen someday that we have no control over.
Well, we have to be optimistic, too. We're going through all of these improvements, we've just built a brand-new storage tank. I would hope we're not going to have to boil water very often, otherwise we've got real troubles. Right? I mean, we've really spent almost three million dollars for nothing, and that, I mean, I prefer to be a little more optimistic.
I don't think anybody's even thinking about that. The only thing is, we know in five years we're going to have to clean it or inspect it or something, but I hope, sure as heck hope we don't have any problems with it.
I just think it would be nice to have a little bit of cushion of time. We've done so much work in the village. If we could postpone this even four years or four and a half years, to me, there's an advantage there.
A lot of money.
Well, there is an advantage in one way, but the disadvantage is that every year...
It's going to go up.
The price of pipe, the cost of pipe is going to go up.
The labor is going to go up, even if our own people are doing it.
That's true, but if we're at least cutting down the amount of piping that we require, we're reducing the scale of the project.
If we have to, we have to depend on our engineers to give us the right information here.
Right, but according to what Doug said, it won't likely be thirty-two-hundred.
Well, I understand that.
So...
Does anybody else got the system, I was going to ask, I want to ask, is there anybody else in New York State or around here that's got a system like this?
The serpentine piping? I'm sorry, I, I understand the concept of it and, and I, I don't know anybody who has used that term, serpentine piping, possibly John, because he's the only who brought it up, you know? But some, I mean, there are some municipalities that they have huge, huge transmission mains, like four-foot diameter water pipes, all right? So that's like a big tank in the ground, and they get their chlorine contact while it's traveled. That, that is, that's like New York City.
And we haven't had one up until now, correct? With, with the existing tank, we have the existing tank and that's it.
Correct.
Well, let's see what happens, sir.
Um, and if John goes...
I think, I think that, oh, that's funny, let John go.
Oh, yes.
Do we really need a motion or just, okay?
I was thinking just a consensus.
Yeah, I just...
I don't have a heartburn with that one, man.
Do it. Uh, brief discussion, waterfront project building to the end of the year. Remember Paul offered us a couple of different options? One was a, we'll call it a stick-built gazebo on the end, and the other is a pre-constructed one. He needs to have some kind of an answer to give to Albany. We don't have to be specific about the design or anything like that, but the stick-built one would be less expensive by about, what, twenty, twenty-five percent, Phil? And, but, we'd probably end up building the stick-built one, Brian, and, you know, you guys have got plenty to do, and this is grant money that we're going to be getting to do this thing, so the suggestion, Phil and I were talking about, the suggestion is that we, we look at the pre-built models and not decide on the specific architect for it at this point. Any comments, discussion, one way or the other?
If he can't build it, we're going to subcontract it out, somebody's going to build it, you know, so thanks.
Well, it's not that, you get a prefab, you just, you put it together.
Yeah, they just got it.
Comes in pieces and put it together. But it's definitely going to be wood.
Yes.
So we have some samples or brochures that show some of the, there's many, many different possibilities, and I think that you're kind of, sit down, take a look at that, decide which one they want, but I think you were looking, kind of getting an idea of, you know, whether you were going to go with a pre-bid type thing or a stick-built.
I think we should go with the pre-bid. Do we need a motion on that?
Might as well have it, and I think he'll be happy with it.
He's all right.
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all, Mr. Air.
Thank you, Trustee Huckrow, Trustee Penfield.
The first item I have this evening, I believe you all received a copy of, it's the letter from the Champlain Fire District, and they inform us that they did not decide to take us up on our offer for the fifty-five-thousand-dollar fire contract for next year. I just would like to follow up on the article that people probably read in the press Republican. It was a little bit disappointing that they didn't communicate with us after receiving the letter that I sent them, and I'd also like to, to get some consensus from the board that we are still open to hearing from them during the future, and I think that they're interested in that. I wish them well in their endeavor, but should it not work out for them the way they planned, our door is open should they need us. So, you know, would at least like to be able to, to reiterate that to them in a letter. Is that...
I was told tonight in the dungeon, there's no negotiation.
I'm not talking about for next year, I'm talking about down the road in the future. You know, I think, certainly, I, I hope things will work out for them, but if they don't, I'd like them to know that we are here and available to work with them should they desire.
We don't want to be closed-minded about it.
No.
This guy, I believe that this board, and I'll make a statement tonight, has never been closed-minded. We have kept the door open constantly. I think it's been very, very poor communications.
Yeah, and I just repeat what I said in the paper, I feel very badly that they didn't at least contact us after Junior Moore and I went to the meeting in July, and it's unfortunate, but again, I wish them well with what they're trying to do, but I, I would like to send them a letter to that effect, if, if you approve of it.
No problem with that. I do have one thing that I would like to bring up about it. I would like to see, I don't know if it would be come from us or the fire company, but a letter sent to the people that, in the district that we protected, not, not a derogatory letter, just another saying, "We want to thank you for your patience and kindness over the last seventy years. You're now, because I believe there's a lot of people out there not know what's going on, and you will now be protected by the Champlain Fire Department starting January one for fire EMS." Something to that.
My personal feeling would be something like that might be better coming from the department, because those are the people who are, who have been serving, I mean, we've been, we've been signing the contract as a board and funding the fire department, but it might be best coming from the group of volunteers who have been serving that area.
We think right.
Brian?
It's fine, you can bring it up at our meeting.
Because I had people today question me about it.
Yeah, there's...
They, they do not know. It's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that they don't know. And they don't know, a lot of them just don't understand what's going to happen. And I think it's a sad situation, but that's okay.
Of course, it never would have happened.
And...
Okay. And the second item I have is a discussion of the trailer of Stephen Nicole Lucia, four, I believe it's four Rapidow Way. I spoke with, with Mike earlier tonight, and I know he had a meeting with our lawyer today and discussed what we could possibly do. Mike, would you like to follow up on that?
Yeah, I have sent letters to the Lucias, two letters. One was a letter telling them that the trailer was on village property, the village wanted it off, they never responded, then we sent an order to comply, and they signed for the letter, they got the letter, but still they haven't responded and taken it off, so the question to Mr. Murnane was, "What do we do now?" And based on those two letters that we sent, he said that the village is within its powers to remove the trailers. So at this time, it's whatever the board feels they want to do, but he, he said they are clear to go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I, I agree with what we should do. So do we need a motion, Doug?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion then that we authorize the removal of the trailer of Rapidow Way.
It's like a motion made and seconded, any discussion? I have some discussion. I don't have heartburn with what's going on, but that trailer, if it's removed, will be removed to pieces, because it cannot be moved in one piece.
It'll be scrapped.
It will be scrapped. It will be, I can guarantee you, day after tomorrow, it would be gone. The back hole, and that's it. I just want everybody to know this upfront that it cannot, so, do you understand?
There wasn't a different expectation with that, I mean, Tom Rennan understood that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still okay with that?
Right.
You want to give them one more shot, tell them we're going to rip it out?
Nope.
Be very patient with them.
I know, we've been...
We've been over backward.
Okay, that's fine.
It's been two, two months in letter-writing and waiting, you know, time, you know, time and waiting, and then the orders took a lot, and he feels that the village owns the property, it was his decision, that the village owns the property, they've been warned, if they wanted to get it off, and they made no attempt to remove it. So today, there's been no attempt to remove it. So he says the village is well within its rights to move it, however they want to do it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, still on codes, two different things. In meeting again with Mike and Tom Rennan earlier in August, we discussed a couple of things that are on their way in terms of zoning, and one of the things that I think we were lacking in was part of our code covering adult entertainment and also still the code for the subdivisions now that we have established our planning board. So what I'd like to do is, is follow up on something that Mr. Murnane suggested, which is to place a one-year moratorium on each of those items, which needs to be done both in the form of a local law. The, the moratorium for the subdivisions in the village for three or more lots would be for one year, and it would give us a chance to get all of the different subdivision regulations reviewed by Doug and by Brian and by Mike and by Tom Rennan, so that we can get that into our village code, so that the planning board can then work on subdivision approval. So it's something that's very standard practice, it's something that Tom suggested, I know that the town of Champlain also did the same thing, they ordered on their subdivision ordinance as well. So that's something that I think we need to do, and also the same thing goes for the issue of adult entertainment.
Well, there was an article in the paper the other day saying that they were going to sell property, that lady from Vermont that was here, what's her name, Phil?
Charlene, I believe.
Yes, she did have an add in the classifieds.
Yeah, I saw that the other day.
Yeah.
I didn't understand that, it looks like they're going to go ahead with that.
Well, she did mention to us the night she was here, I believe, that she had three lots that she wanted to develop. It'll just be, I guess, a matter of whether or not the, the local law has been established by the time that she goes ahead and sets that up, so. I don't think we've received, have we received anything, Mike, on those?
I haven't received anything.
No, I haven't either, so. My understanding is until we are officially notified and we have a set of, of plans, I guess, that the ad appears in the paper, but as far as we know, nothing official is happening.
She has to file a letter of intent with the village if she's going to have subdivided it, just like anybody else does.
Yeah.
Part of the way I've read, and that will be the investment done yet.
I haven't seen anything, other than the night she was here and she spoke to us in person, but there's been nothing sent to us in writing, you know, plans.
I mean, the more houses we build, the villages are better, which, you know, I mean, it's more people paying taxes, the less we're paying.
But you've got to understand, Brian...
Got to be systematic, I know, budgeted.
It's a cost to us. There's, there's certain things that, that we have to budget.
I know, I know.
And we have not budgeted anything.
Well, and, and a perfect example is what, what we did at the last meeting with, with the idea of not having dead ends for our utilities. Those are the kinds of things that we'll be addressing when we have this ordinance in place, and that's why there's a reason for a moratorium for a year, so that we have a better chance of sitting down and looking at those things, and we're not necessarily holding people up, but we're actually making a plan about how we're going to go about it.
Totally and systematic.
So if there's no objection, I would like to request that we authorize Phil to publish a legal notice for a public hearing for the next meeting for the one-year moratorium on adult entertainment and a one-year moratorium for subdivisions of lots three or more in the village. Put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion?
They have to be two separate local lots, so I guess it would be number four and number five.
That's a good mark there. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield, Trustee Jefferson.
Okay, regarding the sanitary sewer force main project, the final punch list was issued confirming the walkover list that was issued in June, and Luck Brothers has begun this work. A water service to a house on Pine Street was found to be substandard, and the Department of Public Works did an emergency repair today, and Luck's warranty should cover the cost of the pavement repair. We had to basically dig up our new pavement. Yeah, well, they dug up out here and stuff happened, so you just patch it, so. And on the overall sewer project, a submission was made last week to the DEC requesting a one-year, one-year extension or more to complete the project. DEC officials in Ray Brook did not immediately see any problem with an extension. We also have nothing in writing regarding the alcohol pipe permit. And regarding Maple Street, this is good news, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the village clerk to advertise for bid for the Maple Street paving project, including a pre-bid conference on September eleventh of two thousand and three, and a bid opening date of September sixteenth of this year. We'll all put that in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Just a question, going back to when John was speaking earlier, the question about[1712.37] The question about that corner, does that, is the timeline okay, John, with that, in terms of deciding what to do with, with the water line on the corner, well, Maple Street crossing with Clinton and Liberty?
I think so.
We're okay with, with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we have that paperwork regarding that issue of the 16-inch line.
Right.
It's kept it buried.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding is John's got that report, it's about ready to issue to you guys to document what I said to you in the other place, that had covered that issue of this slump. We should be able to get it ready for that.
Wait, okay, I'm sorry.
We should be okay.
Maybe I'm not understanding that. Did we not, did we discuss, or did I miss it? We, we're not gonna do anything new with that then, is that correct? Is that what John's report is gonna say to us?
Yeah, our recommendation to you is to leave the pipe where it is.
Okay.
Regarding this slump that John Hookrow referred to.
Right.
I'm gonna look into that, because I think there is some things we could add to minimize or negate that.
And that can be put in with the timeline if I just wrote it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a long thing, you know, if we focused on it, we could punch that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All who are in favor?
I, I may be wrong, but I don't think so. I believe, I don't think it was last meeting, it was the meeting before, there was a motion made by someone to authorize to go out to bid for the paving for Maple Street that was already done. So if that has been done, I'll just note that you're gonna have a pre-bid conference. On what date did you say, Brian?
September 11th, and a bid opening date of September 16th. I'll give you this after Phil.
Okay, I believe the motion was made a few meetings ago, but if it has been, I'll just note this in the minutes, if that's okay with you folks, of the pre-bid conference and the bid opening on 16th.
Fine.
I think it's July 20th.
I believe so, it was done a while ago.
Okay, just have a couple other things to talk about tonight. In the last couple months, Mayor Rivers has been taking a lot of heat from, I guess, the residents and the taxpayers in the village. We took on a lot of projects in the village, and some of the projects haven't worked out the way the board, not just the mayor, but the board, has hoped or expected. And it's, it's rather unfortunate, and every day we take heat, there's not a day go by that somebody doesn't call me or mention to me about Maple Street. We just talked about it again today at work. But things don't always work out, you know, the, the way you hope for. It's a big project, it's like taking a major undertaking of your house, things don't work out always the way, doesn't, the timeline just doesn't work out. And Mayor Rivers hasn't really said too much, but I know he's been taking a lot of heat, and we've been taking heat, and it shouldn't be just the mayor that should be taking the heat. So just on the motion that I made earlier tonight and talking to Doug, we hope we're cautiously encouraged that Maple Street's gonna be finished this year. But again.
Not finished.
Well, it's gonna be paved, sorry, excuse me.
Paved.
And the sidewalk's gonna be done. I mean, it's not gonna be the final, but it's gonna be a lot better than it is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And, and it shouldn't be just the mayor taking heat, because we all got our little vote up here, and, you know, we're putting all our things together. So whether you agree or disagree with the decision, you gotta know that we're looking out for the best interest here in the village. So please be patient with us. We've gone back to watering down Maple Street, which is taking, it's making people feel a little bit better, 'cause it's reducing the dust. If we were gonna Monday morning quarterback, we maybe should've posted signs, local traffic only, and, you know, really reduce the amount of people that were on Maple Street, but we can't change that, so please be patient. Just one other thing that's been bothering me, but I haven't really, I've talked to a lot of people in the village, just finally people are coming to me from the village board, or the village employees and, and are telling me things in the village. It seems like a lot of negative energy is being expended by our village employees. And like I tell everybody, if you've got an idea, you know, come to somebody on the village board and tell us, because, you know, your thoughts and ideas of our employees are, it's really important, and it's, it's very important for us to, to come to us with a problem, but try to come with a solution, too. I hear a lot of negative stuff, this is wrong, that's wrong. Well, okay, if it's wrong, how do we fix it, you know? Tell us, like, we use engineers to, to guide us, and we use attorneys when we're not sure. So, you know, we always try to have a solution to the problem. A year from now, hopefully, things are gonna be better here in the village than they are today, but I hope we don't have to make deep cuts in the budget or in the workforce, but it could happen, you know, being a little bit on the negative side sometimes, but, you know, it's being, it's, it's reality. So I, I hope that everybody that works in the village will please come to work and do your job every day. There's been a lot of, it's like people are criticizing of other departments, and, and what I'm trying to say is, don't worry about the other people in the other departments. You know, not everybody's gonna get along, I know that. But when you're here at work, you've gotta get along with the people you work with during business hours. It's, it's really important, because the people that work for the village are mostly taxpayers, too. Not everybody that lives in the village or works for the village lives in the village, but majority of the people do. So I hope that, you know, you can be positive and be thankful that you have a decent job with benefits. I know we don't overpay in the village, and you can make a lot more money if you wanna go other places to work, you know, but you have to jump in your car and go down to Platchburg or whatever. So, you know, I'm not trying to drive anybody out, not trying to be negative, but I'm just trying to say that we tried to work things out with the village employees, and it, it didn't work out the way I thought. And there's not a day go by that somebody doesn't come to me and say, wow, I'm mad at the sewer guys, or I'm mad at the village crew, or I'm mad at the electricity. So I hope that people can, you know, work to make the village, you know, just a little bit better place to live and to work, and that the village crew can get along a little bit better than they have been, because there's a lot of animosity in the village, and, to be honest with you, I'm kinda tired of hearing that, so negative stuff. So that's all I have to report tonight.
Uh, on that same subject, the asphalt line and the extension, I've asked the village clerk, we have sent a letter to Assembly, Northloch, and Senator Little on this subject, but a complete package. I am asked to set me up some dates for the vote, because I, I think it's time now we start using political pressure. This is ridiculous, what we're going through on that asphalt line. I don't see any need for this whatsoever. I might be wrong. I might be way off base, I don't know what I'm talking about here, but I think that waiting was it since June for our letter from the DEC, go away, and I miss it, is, is just out of context of everything. As soon as I know, I'll let you know the dates, and everybody's more than welcome to the vote. With that, thank you, Trustee Jefferson. I'll put a meeting after public, no, wait a minute, Phil, sorry.
I have nothing, sir.
What's that?
I just wanna make the board aware of that with the Champlain Fire District not, not contracted with us that next budget year, you'll have a $45,000 deficit that, that will have to be made up sometime.
Seventeen thousand.
I did a quick calculation today, and that's roughly about a 45 cent increase in the taxes based on this year's tax assessments.
Mike, you also gotta remember to join the band out seventeen thousand, cross with the fire company. You will not be getting $9,000 more for compensation insurance. And just, you know, let me know, because that $45,000 we got, we really didn't get much money on that.
Why would the compensation change?
Uh, because we no longer protect that district, and the way compensation, compensation insurance, this figure for volunteer firemen is on population. So I talked with our insurance carrier a year ago, I asked him what the difference would be, and when he calculated it out, what we were paying in, in the population sits about $9,000 more, just to have that contract out there. So that $9,000 or that population will have to be picked up by the Champlain Fire District from January 1st.
Well, what, I, I just like to, how do you explain the, the protocol, like, say we have a big fire in, let's just take the GAM model, just for example. If we have a big, major fire out there, the way I understand it, automatically we call out mutual?
As it stands now, as it stands now, it's a mutilate system. We, the only people we're automatic to is Champlain. Of any other department, the only people in the whole county that we're automatic to is Champlain. Other departments are automatic to other departments on each side of their district. Albert is not in the automatic, so they're not considered part of it. And if you stop to think, our, our district is just covered by Champlain. Okay, automatic, the way it works, and automatic, and I will state this, it's only a handshake agreement, that is not a signed contract by mutivate, like mutivate is. Automatic is a handshake. When a reported structure fire in a district, the nearest department is automatically toned out at the same time. At the same time, now. Mutulate is, we're in mutulate with the whole county, with all the other departments. You are on the scene, and you request certain pieces of the equipment, it's mutivate. It's not, you know, you just auto, automatically send a truck. If you're on the scene and I want a tanker, you request a tanker. I want a ladder, you request the ladder. That's the way mutulate works.
Okay, so, I mean, the way I see it, I mean, I'm not in the fire department, but if there's a bad fire in Champlain like there was, we tone out the fire department. I mean, it's just the way the fire department is, what do you need, bling, 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 we send it, put the fire out. But now, the way things are gonna be now, we send one truck, right?
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, but still, I mean, people in Champlain.
The way it works, it's just like, let's take the barn fire in Chez E. We were not automatic to that. They called us for a tanker, we sent the tanker. We sent what they called for. Now in Champlain, they called for a ladder from us, but we're automatic with a pumper. So our pumper and ladder went. Pumper went first, because it was toned out immediately. The ladder went as it was requested sometime later, you know, like 10, 15 minutes, whatever. That's the way that works. I mean, they can come back, I'm regular mutulate, and say, gee, I need another pumper from Ross's Point. We can send it.
But it's not guaranteed we're gonna send it.
We may not have the manpower to send it, again.
But the way.
Mutulate is not designed to strip another department.
No.
Because you strip another department, you gotta move another department in. I mean, mutulate is there to help your neighbor, you know, this is, actually, what mutulate does is give a fire department, a metropolitan fire department, in the back pocket. That's what it does.
What I'm trying to build up, to build the question up is, it's like, one of the firemen explained to me about 10 days ago, I went to the fire station to use the phone. I mean, we're spending $350,000 for a brand-new fire truck. I mean, if you think we're gonna run that fire truck all over to everybody else's fires, I don't have a problem with doing it, but the responsibilities in the village are Allison's Point.
You're absolutely right. And, and if, if, Brian, we have two pumpers, and we'll always have two pumpers for that reason. One is committed to mutulade, the other is committed to protect our district, and that new pumper will be committed to protect our district, I hope. That's what we bought it for.
I don't have a problem, but I mean, like Bruce said, our ambulance is $80,000, and pretty soon we're gonna need another ambulance, and it's $130,000.
Well, there's answers to that. I mean, in, in the next two or three months, we have a lot of soul searching and checking to do here.
I don't think.
I'm not even sure we can enter into mutulate contract with Champlain for a, for an ambulance service, because that's a non-for-profit corporation, that's not a government entity. We are a government entity, I'm not even sure that. I've got some feelers out through our lawyer to answer some questions on that.
Well, I mean, everybody that's on the ESM board, I happen to know personally, and I like everybody on the board, and if you think I'm gonna say anything bad about any of those people, I'm not gonna.
I'm not saying anything bad, I'm just saying it's fact here.
No, but I'm just saying, I don't wanna fight with those guys. If they got a fire in Champlain, and we had problems, they come down here. They got problems in Champlain, we should go. The right thing is go, help them out, put the fire out, and resolve the differences later.
Well, here's the thing, Brian. So say there's a fire right outside this village, it's now being covered by Champlain, and we got paid for it. And we go into automatic, and we'll be there fighting that fire before Champlain, right?
Or a bad car accident.
And, and we're not getting paid for it. And we're not getting paid for it anymore. And you know what? They could sit there and lie by us, because that's what they'll do. Dr. Sussard's already made that statement, I don't wanna throw things out there, but he made a statement right in the paper. Ross's Point's always there for mutulade. Am I right or wrong? He made that statement right in the paper. We're going, we're going to be used to no end, I can see it coming. They just can't possibly cover that district. They can't do it with what they got.
How do you feel about that, chief? I mean, we haven't really asked your opinion about this, because it's been such a, it just hasn't worked out the way we.
I think between the members of the two fire departments, between Champlain and Ross's Point, there's no controversy at all.
No, no, you're right.
There's none, I mean.
That's what I was saying.
It, it seems like we're, both departments are like caught in the middle of people that are making decisions that affect the community, and affects the taxpayers of the town and the village, and we're like caught in the middle. I know that the chief of Champlain and myself, we don't wanna get involved in a controversy between anybody. We have very good working relationships between Champlain and Ross's Point, and we're gonna keep it that way. I don't know if it's just see who's trying to make the bigger department, or politically what's happening here, but the local fire departments don't wanna get involved. Between the bickering and the arguing between certain people, I mean, I don't, you know. You know, you always hear from Kelly, well, she says that there's no communication between herself and Champlain, and Champlain says the thing, the same thing. There's no communication between Champlain and Ross's Point, Ross's Point and Champlain. I mean, people gotta sit down and chill out a little bit and think about what they're doing. They're making decisions that are affecting the people of the community, and they gotta think about what they're, what they're doing, who they're affecting. I mean, we're not gonna let somebody burn or, if they needed EMS ambulance, Ross's Point will always respond.
I hope so.
We will.
Yeah.
And that's the kind of people we are. We're not selfish people, we, we do it because we like the volunteer to do it. And the way I look at it, as long as we have volunteers to volunteer for our services, that's the way it's gonna be, as long as I'm chief. And I mean, we have a very good group of people in our department, and Champlain does too, and it just seems like everybody is looking the better themselves. The only thing that I have a question is, at whose expense? You know, it's nice to have all these new trucks and, you know, look what we protect, and look what you protect, and bottom line is, who are you affecting? And I know that Bruce Barkum, the chief of Champlain, and myself, we don't wanna get in the middle, but we're there to help each other. I, it's, I don't know who's gonna gain from it.
Well, are we maybe not, should we jump on the bandwagon, or maybe should we have gone together, or, I mean, I don't know, I'd like to be able to say, well, we can straighten this out.
Well, you know, what really, what really got me upset on, the fire commissioners asked for a list of our calls that we provide to the town, to, to the district that we protect, and here we set a price of $55,000 for X, you know, they're looking at X number of calls. This is how many calls that you make in a year, but that call could go from one call to a thousand calls. This is a service that we provide. We have the very best of equipment, we upgrade our equipment. I mean, here we're, we're purchasing a brand-new pumper that's $355,000. I mean, we wouldn't say that, no way, it wouldn't go. I mean, if they have a, a big block fire, George, George knows, in the past, we sent all our pumpers to Champlain to help them.
It's the right thing to do?
Right, but what I guess, what I have a heartburn with is, you can't, you can't judge us for how many calls we make, it's the service that we provide. You know, they say, well, you made, say if you made 100 EMS calls and 50 fire calls, but next year it could be 400 EMS calls and 200 fire calls. It's the same price. It's a service that we provide, and I don't think you're gonna find a better service for the amount that we ask for, for the protection that we provide to the people.
That was one other question that I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask this question before. I mean, you came up with this figure of 55,000, so you're talking over $1,000, 52 a week a year, $1,000 and thousands and change. How did you determine that figure, I mean, without having to give me?
You know, you gotta look at the cost of the insurance.
Yep.
I mean, our tanker, we provided a tanker, what was the cost of that tanker, George, when we purchased that?
$90,000.
That is a $90,000 tanker. That has no, no purpose to us in the village, we have the hydrant system, or we have a lake that we can pump from. We bought that for the people of the district, so we can go out and set up and be prepared, you know, to fight fires and, it's just, you know, there's, you gotta figure the insurance costs, like you said, the, what's that, the compensation insurance, you're talking $9,000, that takes a big chunk rate out of that $55,000. And the maintenance on the vehicles, the upgrading.
Depreciation.
Depreciation.
It's a pretty expensive business to be in.
I mean, our ALS ambulance is one of the top of the line in Clinton County. I mean, look at the equipment that's on that rig. I mean, look at the equipment that's on that rig. Can you put a price tag on somebody's, that needs an ALS ambulance? I can.
Well, I just, I just wish we would've, things would've worked out a little bit better.
Well, you know, Brian, the way I look at it, is we made an offer, it's out there. If they need our service, maybe they'll come back and talk to us. If they don't need our service, if, you know, if they don't wanna talk to us, that's their prerogative. Like Kelly said, we wish them well. We don't wanna see anyone, you know...
No, no.
We don't wanna see anyone hurt, or anyone, you know, turned out. We're willing to help.
Yep.
And they knew that, too, Brian, because we, you know, I attended the meetings with members of the fire department, so they knew we were here and ready to help them. It's not as if this is a shock to them, they, you know, that... I went to a meeting specifically to the purpose of discussing what type of coverage they would need from us for next year with the change in their EMS service.
Yep.
And the way they responded was asking us for the data over the past couple of years, the number and types of calls that we answered, and we provided that to them. And so, we gave them what they were looking for. Now, they, they've just chosen not to take us up on, on a contract for next year, so...
I think it was cut and dried before we even went through this. They already decided they were gonna split, now I might be wrong in that. I wanted to go and see Doctor Southwood and talk to him, but I didn't run across him, but it's not gonna change.
Well, from my point of view, I, I have never bickered with anyone on this issue. I've gone there, I've listened to them, I've been very welcome, welcoming of their comments, and I have been available to discuss it with them, and I, and I would hope that they would agree with the statement that I just made. And, and that's the way that it's been. And again, I, I wish them well, but I, I agree with what Brian said, come next year, if they need us and they call us, we're gonna be there. And it's not as if the contract will end on the seven thirty-first and we'll never enter into another contract with them, and I think that they realize that. But we're, I, I at least have not ever approached it, and none of the firemen that I've attended the meetings with have ever given them a problem in terms of the contract, at all.
I figured this out before, and we don't have fifty-five thousand dollars coming in, and we budgeted on fifty-five thousand. That's already thrown our budget, and then...
We haven't budgeted anything, it's next year. That's next year.
Oh, you're going the calendar year, I was thinking that was going on...
That goes calendar year.
It goes calendar year.
Yeah, okay.
Ryan, on the other, you know, I don't know what the people that we protect in our district, what they pay for, for fire protection, but if you add up, I, I, what are they, a dollar seventy-five a thousand?
A dollar seventy-five a thousand.
Dollar seventy-five a thousand. For, for the assessed value that we protect in our, in the district that we provide for the town, fifty-five thousand, isn't a lot of money.
Yeah, it's gross off the table, almost.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, that is a service that we're providing, and you could take, what they do with the rest of their money, that's their business. But it's, the way I look at it, is for what we protect, the assessed value, fifty-five thousand, is just a drop in the bucket.
They look at two issues, they look at call for call. Like you said...
It could be five calls, it could be a hundred calls.
If you go out, go out and hire somebody to plow your driveway for the winter, and you say, I'll give you an example, Wyatt hires so-and-so to plow his driveway, let's say twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and he plows it once, he still gets twenty-five thousand dollars.
Two thousand a hundred times.
But if he plows it a hundred times, they're buying the service, is what they're buying.
And that's a guaranteed service.
Well, I guess enough sad about, they wish it, it worked out.
Doug?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Well, the only thing I have to bring up is, on the projects, if we're, we're all the way up Clinton Street, as far as Delaware, on the main line for electric, and we got the road crossings done, so by the end of this week, I'm planning to have all the main lines in, all the way to the substation and the road crossings. So then, the second crew that's coming behind us are just hooking up the house services. But as of next Monday, I wanna start back in the substation. We're gonna have to, I wanna get ahold of Gary Lightch at Wyatt, and we have to have a small outage to tie in the two south feeders that we worked on last year. We wanna complete that project, and then we're gonna start the upgrading on the substation. So, the, the goal that I set for myself and for the crews is, we plan to have all the piping done by the end of September, completely done. And I told them that I would like to have all the wire completely installed before the ground freezes, so they can work all winter on Spicy Cable.
Like a pest master.
I have the Public Works crew, they're gonna start repairing the sidewalks and doing, going back to the little jobs, and we have valve repairs to do, we have some manhole repairs to do, so that's where the Public Works, you'll see them throughout the village, installing some new signs. And just a little update on what's going on, I know I like to give a little progress report once in a while, so, just in case you don't have the time to see us on the street and have a question of what we're doing. Things are going very well, I think.
Thank you, man, appreciate it. Doug?
Yeah, just a couple things on zebra muscles. Some of you may be, may recall that we're working at Georgia Pacific still with zebra muscles, we're working on, on the Sparker, on the next generation of the Sparker. And what's happening is, next Wednesday, September tenth, it looks like there's gonna be a little demonstration, and right now, there's invitations going out to Chief Water Plant Operator Gary Malinsky, Philip Harnwa, and the mayor, to, if they would like to come, to check out this new Sparker. And would any of the trustees be interested, 'cause I'll get you guys added to the list, and let me know. Also, on this new Sparker, the group that is leading the research now is out of Boston, and they are applying for a New York State grant to continue to do research and development, and they would like to list Ross's Point as a possible test site, et cetera, for the new device. And so, I talked with Gary about this, and he asked that I come to the board, to see if the board would be interested in having your name and some information about the village and what it's done to date with a Sparker, be included in that application or not.
Not gonna cost you money, though, is it?
No, it's not gonna cost you any money.
Do we have anything positive to say about our experience with the Sparker?
About our experience with that Sparker?
Here, yes. With the Sparker we have?
No.
I don't think so. Does that affect anything?
Excuse me?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, what'd you say?
Does, does that affect the type of information that you're looking for?
No, 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 I don't think so. Because, you see, this Sparker is not from the same outfit, it's from another level of outfit, and so, so it's a different animal. It's, we're calling it the Death Star. And it, it's zebra muscles.
We hope.
All right, so, anyways, it's just a chance, it's a half hour away. If you wanna go and just meet the people and see what's going on, it's not a sales pitch, it's really the researchers from Boston trying to just show potential customers what it's about. As I've said here repeatedly over the years, I'm staying close to this project, because I'm trying to keep Ross's Point in there, so that we can be a test site, so that we can get some free stuff, so that if there is another prototype or pre-prototype, maybe we'll get to use it. And right now, what's happened is, this new outfit has landed a lot of government money. They've done a lot of work at GP, and it hasn't cost GP anything, including retrofitting physical plant and everything in order to hold this device. And so, that's the kind of benefit I'd like to see for Ross's Point, and one of the reasons I just hung in there. And so, that's it. Any questions, or it's a box?
What they want to do is, they use us as a test site, it could cost us nothing.
Right now, they wanna list you as a possible test site, you know, we're getting you in the door there, and what it's gonna do is help, help them, help their grant proposal pass the weight test, all right, so that they can add your name and everything. And then I'm gonna stay with these people and keep working on them, as I have from day one. These are the people that are up here with the Corv engineers, and we did the soundings and everything a couple of years ago, some of you may recall, and so, it's just a continuation of that. They focused on GP for a variety of reasons, they've got a large thirty-inch diameter pipe, and it's more easily accessible, et cetera. So that's why they've been focusing down there, and the other reason is because it's an industry, not a drinking water plant, and so, there's less Department of Health issues to handle when you're dealing with industrial service water. So, anyways, two questions. One is, would anyone else like to go? Would anyone like to go?
No.
Okay, you're out. And the, the next question is, may I exploit your name?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mike? I guess we're for recess? [inaudible] all the favor?
Aye.